Okay, so I will call to order the school committee meeting of March 31st, 2020 at 6:04 PM. This is a remote meeting during the COVID-19 district closure. We did invite people to submit any public comments in advance and we did not receive any of those today. So, and it does not appear that we have our students on the agenda that they have been able to join us yet this evening. If they happen to be able to make it in, we will make some time for them to give a student report as well. We are going to have a report on our COVID-19 response, an FY20 financial update, and a short review of the parent survey results from the Student Opportunity Act survey that the district did to create our Student Opportunity Act response for the state. We also have some action items this evening. We have the superintendent's annual evaluation. And information, Dr. Evans, I believe that, do we still have the Wi-Fi grant or?
I think actually we can defer on that unless people have questions because the grant has already been approved. It just is a different kind of professional development that it's now.
Okay, it just changed the, okay. And then we have some minutes to approve. Chair report, superintendent report, and our future agenda items and meeting dates, which we will talk about at the end of the meeting. And so that brings us to the district COVID response. And before we begin, I just wanted to thank the teachers and staff and all of the community for your patience and strength in the face of this challenge and the anxiety that it often brings up. The unknown is always uncomfortable, but even more so in the face of what we've all been facing the last couple of weeks. I've seen teachers and administrators rise to this extraordinary challenge through amazing collaboration and ingenuity. They've had to adapt to changing guidelines, closure dates, and state guidance that continues to change over and over again. And we've also witnessed an amazing community response that has supported the district's efforts to feed families and students. We're incredibly grateful to the Coalition, Winchester's Got Lunch, and to ANCA. And through all this, our leadership team has stayed strong under Dr. Evans' leadership. And while we know we can never exactly replace the classroom in the cloud, our teachers are doing their best to recreate the academic and social experiences that our kids have come to expect in Winchester Public Schools. And we just wanted to take a minute to thank you all on behalf of the school committee. And that leads us to an update, Dr. Evans, on what our response has been.
Sure. So I'd like to cover four main areas in a brief oral report. You might want to pull up the distance learning plan that I sent to you. There have been some minor changes to it that I will discuss, and it should go out to parents in a day or two. And I'll talk about the process we're using to vet it in a minute. Before that, I'd just like to make sure that the committee knows that all of the leadership team members have been meeting with a variety of stakeholder groups, both within and outside the district. There are several emergency operating committees in town. One is sort of town-based and one is regionally based. I sit in on those meetings. I think some, Michelle does as well as chair in some of those meetings. I've also been meeting weekly with the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors to share strategies with other superintendents and to seek resources primarily to support special education. That's their area of expertise. We've set in on numerous meetings with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Both the commissioner, Ellen, has met with the finance people, Jen's met with curriculum people. We've had several regional meetings, a long meeting with local area towns sponsored by Lexington where there were breakout groups for curriculum, special education, and finance, and general superintendent's group. The Mass Association of School Superintendents has met. And so we are not operating in isolation. We're in constant contact with other superintendents. There isn't another day. There isn't a day that goes by where I don't speak with one or more superintendents to seek their help, find out what they're doing, or share what we're doing. So it truly is a regional response, and people, I think, have risen to the occasion. The four main areas I'd like to talk about in terms of COVID response during the closure of our physical schools would be distance learning and the transition to that as a more formal process as supported by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Special Education, and Pam can jump in on the summary that I give and expand on it or correct me if I misspeak. Ellen will speak about food service briefly. And then I'll talk about the parent survey that we did right shortly after we had started the first phase of distance learning. So the distance learning plan that I sent to you is a draft that we've developed based on lots of conversation with our all-evaluators team, which is everyone who's a supervisor or evaluator in the district, all the principals, central office. We sent it to the attorney for some feedback. And as you all know, we currently have a memorandum of agreement with our union, four union groups that's going to expire on the 4th. And so we needed to do a negotiation to extend that. We do have some elements of that that we would expect to negotiate tomorrow. But the distance learning plan has been vetted through all of the teachers and staff members as well. And so everyone in the district should be familiar with it as we start to transition. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education at first gave us very specific guidance to say that school, as it is transitioning to a kind of digital form, is not, was not meant to be a replacement for what happened in the classroom, that it was meant to be an enrichment or extension or deepening of knowledge. And once it became clear that the closure was going to be more than a couple of weeks, the federal Department of Education and the State Department of Education had some conversations. There was some conflicting guidance around how quickly and how strongly we should transition to a more structured learning experience for our students. And so this distance learning plan talks about that. Has it the concluding portion of the plan, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines in relation to distance learning? And I'll just walk through some of the highlights, and then we can take questions. So one of the things that it's important to remember is that our core values really drive what we do. The beacons that we had established around individual pathways for success, communities of collaboration, and healthy balance and wellness are all pillars upon which we can plan our instruction during a closure and be sure that we are focusing on the social-emotional learning needs of our students and families, especially as we anticipate that some students and some families will face illness or other hardship during this closure. So our expectation for structured learning aligns with what the department recommends, which is about half of the typical learning day should be set aside for structured learning activities. Some of those will involve Zoom conferences or Google Hangouts or Google meetings with teachers, not every day, but several days a week. Some high school students will move beyond those three hours, particularly if they're preparing for AP tests. And beginning the week of April 6th, teachers will work with families to talk about what the schedules will be. One of the things that's going to be in this plan is a high school rotating schedule so that we can minimize conflicts as teachers schedule Zoom meetings. What's important to recognize is that the main objective is to continue learning and to support students and families. And so if there are students and families whose circumstances mean that students cannot participate fully through a digital means, other means can be supported, and so they should not hesitate to reach out to teachers. Jen has worked really hard to support every family who's requested it with Chromebooks and/or wireless hotspots. But there are some families who just don't have the capacity to support, especially younger students during the day. They might need to do it at night if they're working during the day. So we want to be very flexible. There's also support through the National Honor Society. There's a long list of tutors who are well-versed in a variety of academic areas, and they're there to support middle and high school students. So I'm going to stop there and take questions. That's sort of just general structure and expectations. I'm going to talk about special education, English learner, and then sort of more specifics around grading in a minute. But why don't I stop there and take any questions from committee members?
I just had a question, Judy, about the National Honor Society tutoring help. I read about that with great interest. I thought that was really nice. Is that just for high school students or are they extending that to middle school, elementary school students who might need help?
So at this point, we're going to try it out with middle and high school students. And all of the students can be contacted through Ipsyda Chalkadar, who's the coordinator of the National Honor Society, the faculty advisor. There's a list that will be of students and their names on a spreadsheet and their expertise that they bring. And right now, we're doing middle and high school, but we may expand that to some elementary at some point. Where those students have always provided peer tutoring, but in this case, it'll be remote tutoring. Any other questions sort of generally before I move into special education and kind of district-wide components?
I have one, Judy, if I can. It's very broad. It may apply to what you just described or maybe what's coming. The Board of Education had a meeting this morning, I believe, and I know you've been working hard on this prior to that meeting. I'm just curious if anything that was discussed this morning, I don't know if you were live streaming that, anything happened this morning that impacts this work that you're sharing with us tonight or what's coming in your presentation tonight?
No, not that I know of. The commissioner has been putting out almost daily advisories, and I share those with Michelle. You know, the DESE is juggling and the board juggling a lot of areas where they need to give us advice, financial advice, academic advice, legal advice around collective bargaining, et cetera. So nothing that I saw from the agenda that would affect us or be contrary to any of the information here. There are a few things we're still waiting on further guidance about, and I'll talk about that as I go through. Anything else?
May I ask a quick question about middle school? I know you included the rotating block schedule for the high school as when that would be the expectation that if there were a Zoom or some sort of thing, it would happen for, in those time periods. Is there an expectation at the middle school based on this that any Zooms or something like that would take place during the time that class typically took place on the day it typically took place?
So the middle school, because there are teams of teachers who work together, the expectation is that the team teachers will put together a schedule that'll work for their team and then communicate that rather than having the same rotating schedule as the high school. And so because the high school, the main issue with the high school is teachers don't have the capacity to coordinate or know what conflicts their students might have, but the team teachers do.
Okay.
Then similarly, at the elementary level, there should be a weekly kind of look ahead. And I know some of you have already received this, if you have elementary-age students, to say, here are the days we'll be doing Zooms, here are the activities we'll be doing. I know that there are a lot of things to juggle for parents. I saw that the strings teacher had put out his weekly schedule for which grade levels at what time. And what I would say is there might, we might run into conflicts, and people should speak up and contact the principal or the teacher, and we'll try to be flexible in our scheduling. Sometimes, often, I think there'll be video for students to watch that they could watch at any time. It doesn't have to be a live synchronous kind of effort. For the most part, I think it'll be asynchronous learning. And so we'll see how that works. We'll see how the high school schedule works. One of the things that we learned with the survey on distance learning that parents had given us their initial impression is that families are, some families are hungry for structure, and some families feel overwhelmed by the structure. And so we're trying to be as flexible as possible and stress this with the teachers that we're here to meet the needs of these students. We're trying to be as flexible as possible and as understanding as possible.
Dr. Evans, do you want to talk about whether there's going to be any accountability then at any grade level for sort of class time or being in class? I don't know if you want to address that now or later?
So why don't I take that in a minute when I talk about grading? So let me just talk briefly about special education and English learner expectations. So those specialized services may take the form of one-to-one, one teacher, one student, or small group instruction. They may be audio or video. So the special education supervisors and staff members are going to work with the families to determine what works best. It will not replicate or duplicate what happens in our traditional educational settings. Similarly, students who receive counseling services will be contacted to determine the best way for us to deliver those, either via audio or video or both. The other thing about special education is that they'll start to be remote meetings for IEPs, some IEPs, not initials, probably some annuals, some that are less complex. And so we'll have Zoom meetings or some other form of audiovisual meeting for IEPs. We don't want to hold those up. If testing has been completed, we may be able to hold some of those meetings, but for initial testing, probably we'll have to wait. There's not a lot of testing you can do remotely. Much of it has to be in person. And so in the plan, there's a list of special education contacts. There's also the contact for the E.L. coordinator, who's Laura Shanahan, to assist with anything related to English learner programs. I believe those teachers have been in very close contact with the students already. But if there's any parent out there who wants more information, there's a section here on that. I think it's really important to recognize that the teachers are free to meet the needs of the students. They know their students best, but that there's a lot of support and coaching. Every teacher has been assigned a coordinator or facilitator or supervisor. Teachers are also expected to collaborate with their peers, to share best practices, to coordinate schedules. And so there will be some oversight to be sure that everyone is adequately supported. School nurses are also available to support families, and if students become ill, the family should contact the nurse, and so we can track and support. There is a link on the COVID-19 website for technology support. So if a Chromebook goes down or people have other needs, there's a help ticket to fill out there and information there. If you just get it on your phone, you could call and leave a message. And then there are additional resources on our COVID-19 website for grade levels and content areas. Parents who are looking for additional enrichment or experiences for their students should refer to that COVID-19 website and get some links to things that we've vetted that are pretty solid, that complement our curriculum. At the elementary level, specialist teachers will connect with students every week. Those specialists are reading specialists, library media, physical education, technology, art, and music. They'll coordinate with the core teachers where possible, but often some of them are thinking outside the box. I know, for example, on Twitter, some of the elementary art teachers are posting lots of student work that's being sent to them, which is really gratifying to see. The science, technology, math, and literacy coordinators will suggest enrichment activities, and they'll post those on the COVID-19 website. We have the two social-emotional counselors and school psychologists. They're there to provide support for families. There's a link to mental health resources and contacts in the plan as well at the elementary level. At the middle school level, as I said, team teachers will work with their teams. Specialist teachers, which includes art, computer technology, music, tech ed, phys ed, technology, art, music, physical education, family and consumer science, and dramatic arts, lots of specials, will coordinate and connect with students each week through the same remote learning tools. And at the high school, of course, I've given a draft block schedule. I think that Dennis was planning to have some class meetings via Zoom. I don't know how that works with, you know, 350 students or 400 students, but we'll see how that works for the high school. Certainly, the transition to more traditional content-focused academic work is easiest for our high school teachers. That's what they've been doing for many years, and so, and they've been engaged at middle and high school using Google Classroom for quite some time. So the transition to distance learning for middle and high school to a more structured format should be easier for our district than many others. So let's talk about grading and accountability.
Before you go on, Dr. Evans, could you address counseling as well? What about high school scheduling for next year? Is that still going on during this process? Are they also reaching out via Zoom calls or?
That's a good question. I'll ask Dennis to put something out more specifically about that. I think students have selected their courses, so we're kind of in a lull period. That, and I think later, later in the quarter, junior students will connect with counselors to start the recommendation period. So I think that they're planning the next, at least month and perhaps beyond. Should we not be able to return, what counseling support would look like for the rest of the year? Jason, I don't know if you want to jump in with anything else that you've picked up?
Yeah, I do know that the counselors are on track with course requests and course load looking towards next year. They are still on their normal track there, have just diverted the way that they are working with students to email and these remote platforms as opposed to in person.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
More general. How's our Chromebook and other technology stock? If parents are still requesting them, are we, are we still okay in terms of what we own?
Jen, you want to jump in on that one?
Sure. Yep, well said. We had quite a few in stock that we had set up for MCAS already. So I was handing out more today. We have new students still moving in, so we obviously get them a device as soon as possible. And as teachers are moving beyond enrichment, more parents are saying typically what we're hearing now is maybe they had one device in the household, but they have multiple children, so we're lending them out for those or when people's devices go down. So, but we should be fine.
Okay. And my other question is, have we connected at this point with 100% of our students and staff?
Who wants to take that one?
If no one, I can move on.
Xena, I can. We have had 100% outreach. We have not had 100% response. However, from the lenses that I'm looking at, the sped supervisors and the principals are working on it and are working on really making sure that they or the assistant principal have had some kind of contact with the family to make sure that everybody is well.
Yeah, that's exactly the population I'm most concerned about is some of the higher needs in our special education population. I'm hoping that we can ensure that we've gone to all lengths to get ahold of everybody.
Yeah. We have had, sorry, go ahead, Jason.
No, I was just going to say that I do know that our counselors have made it a specific focus to be reaching out to the students that were deemed more at risk.
And can I ask a flip side of Xena's question?
So before you, before Michelle, before you ask the, just want to remind everyone, we have a protocol that if teachers haven't heard in 72 hours, then the principal is supposed to reach out. The counselor reaches out, the principal reaches out, et cetera. And my suspicion is that there are some families who've left town, who may have second homes, who may not be checking email. And so, you know, we'll follow up with phone calls. We just want to make sure that we've tried to access everybody. And if we know of someone who's in town, we can certainly do a drive-by kind of knock on the door. Don't keep social distance and sort of physically check on someone if we're concerned. Anyone else on the team want to jump in on this one?
Well, I can say for the staff, and again, in our MOAs, if there's any kind of concern on the end of a staff member that are unable to fulfill their duties for whatever reason, they'd reach out to the supervisors and good news so far, that just hasn't been an issue. And the leaders of the buildings have been doing a phenomenal job staying in touch in all different ways with the staff to let them know that we are in this together.
The initial feedback that I got from teachers was that more than 80% of the students had responded and participated in the early stages, particularly at the younger age levels. I think the lack of clarity around accountability led some high school students to be less engaged. And so maybe the shift to more accountability will give some students a nudge, particularly, you know, now that we see that it's going to be at least another month.
So in terms of- My flip side, my flip side real quick of Xena's question was, if parents need to reach out, should they be reaching out in the same natural ways they would if we were in the school building? So either for special education in particular, or even general education, you start with your classroom teacher, and then you reach out to your classroom teacher, or in special ed case, your special ed teacher that's assigned to you. And then sort of, if you don't hear the response you need, who do they reach out to next?
Yep. Just similarly, if we were in school, kind of, they start with their teacher, and then they would go potentially to the sped supervisor, the building principal, or the assistant principal. Usually, most of the time at that point, I'm involved. Somebody's giving me a heads up, so it's very similar.
Michelle, may I ask a special ed question as well?
Sure.
So I just want to follow up on Xena's question about some of our more vulnerable students. I'm assuming that this plan, Judy, really applies to the students that we have in district, and I'm thinking about our out-of-district students. Can you give us a sense, either you or Pam, are the out-of-district sites themselves stepping up and providing some distance learning support? How's that going? And to the extent that it's maybe not fulfilling the need, are there some things that we're having to do, Pam, to kind of backfill to support those students? And of course, are there costs associated with that we need to be aware of?
No costs at the moment that we need to be aware of. The special education collaboratives and private day schools, residential also. There are some residential sites that continue to be open per mandate under Governor Baker. All of our students are back in district. The private schools, out-of-district schools and collaboratives are also responsible for providing remote and distant learning opportunities. And Fran Wolf, who is the out-of-district coordinator, has been working, and I have been on just about every email that has gone out to the out-of-district schools, and I'm aware of their plans. SEEM Collaborative has included, they're just terrific to work with, their staff is just terrific to work with, and they have included each of the buildings, the sped supervisors and the building supervisors, so they also know. We have also made available for some of our students who have expressed interest or their parents have expressed interest, some of the access to the resources that are provided to our students who are attending Winchester schools.
And that applies to the social services we also are offering as well, right, Pam and Judy?
Everything. Yep.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm happy to hear that.
Yep. If I can just piggyback for one more second. We also are continuing to support any home services and/or tutoring that had been put on pause as long as things can be done remotely, so it keeps, again, a level of connectedness. Obviously, the times are not the same, but the services and the continuation of the services, we are trying to stay as consistent as we possibly can.
Okay. Any other questions before I move on to grading? So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education strongly recommends that for the period of closure, that students receive a grade of credit or no credit. After a discussion with the leadership team, we decided to assign students either a passing grade or an incomplete grade, and that no one would receive no credit, that there would be an expectation that everybody would do sufficient work at some point, whether it's after we return or in the summer or in the fall, to gain a passing grade. The teachers are encouraged to give feedback for improvement and not traditional grades. We'll probably use a lot of single-point rubrics, which will level the playing field in terms of what teachers are looking for and be really specific as far as what the goals are for the activities or the learning of the students. But that's the easy part. The sort of passing or incomplete kind of grade during the closure is easy. What's less easy to determine is what happens to the grades that were recorded before we closed. We, and it's complicated, because at the middle school, we have year-long classes, we have semester-long classes. We have semester-long classes. We have primesters, we have quarters. At the high school level, the complicated piece also is what gets incorporated into a grade point average. And for many of our students, grades are very high stakes experiences. They work incredibly hard. They use those grades as evidence of their learning. They use them when they're applying to schools. And it probably doesn't feel good to know that all across the nation and even the world that everyone's educational experience has been upended this semester. And so what we're trying to do is sort of balance equity with what makes sense for us. So what we've decided to do, because quarter three for many students resulted in very few assessments, is to hold off on a decision about what we're going to do with quarter three grades, whether we will extend quarter three and allow students to add additional assessments, whether we'll merge some quarter three and part of quarter four if we return. What we would like to do is to be sure that students feel that they've been treated fairly, that no one is penalized for what they didn't do, that no one is penalized for not having enough grades. And so at this point, we are, we've concluded quarter three, we're moving into quarter four, but we're not issuing a final grade for quarter three until we know how long the closure is. And then we'll make another determination. It's likely that we would open up quarter three again for some students if they needed additional opportunity to show what they had learned. But there's a possibility we might merge some portion of quarter three and quarter four to have enough assessments to have three full quarters of assessments, depending on how-
But that would only be if we returned, right?
It's only be if we return, right. At some point, it will be clear whether or not we're going to return. And then we will determine a process closing out quarter three fairly to be sure that the, all the work that students had done is reported in some fashion. And, and we will talk about that when that time comes. So what's the accountability? What does it mean to be passing? I think that none of us has a crystal ball to know how difficult times will come and for our families and our students and our teachers in the next few weeks. And it may very well be that we have a lot of ill people who cannot complete this work. And so our expectation is that if students are able to complete work, that their teachers will give them lots of feedback for improvement and growth and that the work, the focus will be on the learning and not so much on the measurement of the learning, that students who participate in good faith and do what's expected of them will easily earn a pass. And so that's our plan. And that's a similar plan that most other local districts have put forward when I've consulted with them. So questions about that?
I have sort of two questions on that. Well, one's more of a comment and I, I appreciate that it's in a state of flux. I'm, I'm thinking specifically at the high school level, that the sort of grading standards are going to be hard to know what it is until we know how much longer we're out. But I know that the, the students always crave clarity. So the more clarity you can give them, the better. So that's just a comment. And the, the sort of question will be of mine, which may again, be one we don't have clarity for, so we don't know what the answer is. At the end of the year for a full year class, there's GPA, which is important to some level, but there's also a final grade in a class. Say, high school junior taking physics will end up with a final grade in that class, of which one semester may be a pass or an incomplete in the end. So it's how it meshes into GPA, which is important. But really, how does it mesh into the final grade? Will that final grade be split into two grades? The first half of the year, which was a B and the second half of the year, which was a pass? Or will they be combined into some sort of a whole year grade? And do we have any clue on how that's going to go? So that's sort of my, my comment and my question.
So what some schools are doing is they're only giving letter or number grades for the first semester. And they're giving a credit or no credit for the second semester and they're not merging them into a final grade. And so-
In other districts.
In other districts. And so depending on how long we're out, it may well be that our years, full year grade is based on three quarters of a year of work. But what we don't want to do is hold students back or make them feel as though they can't progress to the next level. If their grades aren't strong, if they put forth a great, a, a good effort and respond to the teacher's feedback, I suspect that nearly all of our students will receive a passing grade. A few will receive incompletes and need to do some work in the summer, which is typically the case anyway. And what we want to do is be flexible and try to meet the needs of students. Everyone recognizes that this is not like regular school and that our students are going to come back in the fall and we'll have to catch them up. And we'll all be really understanding about that. Not all of our students in the fall will have even been in Winchester schools. And so there are, every year, there are lots of students who need to catch up from a variety of other educational experiences. It was interesting that Mr. Lynn put out a message to his parents talking about when he was a child and was, was homeschooled, in fact, unschooled for a year and then went to a boarding school after that, lived abroad. And how the year that he spent with his family was priceless, that he needed to catch up academically to some of his peers who'd been in more traditional schools, but that certainly that, that happened. And so any one of us who's had children who've had illnesses or other reasons why they couldn't progress in a year, know how hard educators work and how well experienced we are to catch them up. That's what we do. And so I hope everybody can just breathe a little easier, knowing that we're going to support as much learning as possible, but that this is the most unusual circumstance any of us have ever faced and that we will all be as flexible as possible and catch the kids up when we return. I hope in, in May or June, but possibly in the fall.
Thank you.
But we are waiting to clarify grading practices till we know whether we're coming back or not.
Right. I think the hesitation was in some other districts were closing quarter three, but extending it by a couple of weeks and letting students kind of scramble to make up work or raise their grades. What we didn't want to do is sort of have this artificial extreme pressure on people right at the time when a great number of people are becoming ill. And so we didn't want to put that pressure on people to close out grade quarter three and try to do a lot of extra work, both the pressure on teachers and on kids, typically high school kids. So there's no sense of urgency for that. We can wait a couple of weeks until we know where we are. And then we'll form a plan to close out quarter three in a way that's fair to everybody.
But students should also get the message that the work that they're doing going forward counts.
The work that they're doing counts towards the quarter four pass or incomplete.
Michelle, I have a question for Pam, if I could.
Go ahead.
Is it, Pam, is it, is it a reasonable hunch or concern that we may be in a position where we need to see a greater number of kids in EYP over the summer, since the purpose of EYP is to prevent some regression? And we're obviously all locked up at home right now. Are you thinking about that? I mean, I, and if, and if there is, if that's a reasonable thing to be thinking about, then of course I, I have budget concerns about that. Difficult to understand how to quantify it, but-
Extending school year.
I do have concerns. We're going to go, we are planning on going forward with our, our summer, our extended year services as if we were in school right now, recognizing that we are not. I think that as we start to know what a return date will look like and how this will play out, I think we're going to need to be very creative with how we are going to support kind of reentry to curriculum and school for our students. I don't know that it's going to kind of fall under the traditional extended year programming and regression kind of comment. There's a lot of things happening right now with the sped directors. Judy had referenced this, that, I mean, we're the meetings with the, with different communities and different stakeholders. The issue is not so much the summer as much as it is compensatory education claims and what that might look like as we go forward and as we start to know kind of what the timeline of this is going to be.
Okay, so I, I appreciate that. And I guess my only request would be as that becomes a little either clearer to you or you begin to identify what those risk factors are quantitatively, that, that you and Judy and Ellen and Michelle are having those conversations? Because I know Judy or Ellen may touch on it when we get to the FY20 financial update. But certainly where my head is, is I'm trying to figure out if we're, do we, have we captured all the encumbrances we need to? Perhaps not. So that's one that comes to my mind, really only because we're having the discussion tonight. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on the distance learning plan before we move into food service? And I guess food service is the last one. Okay, Ellen, you're on.
So we moved to a delivery model on, yesterday for a delivery of breakfast and lunch components to students who have been participating in the lunch program, breakfast and lunch program at the high school. We've discontinued having the grab and goes available for people to come and pick up just out of an abundance of caution and also to make sure that we are making social distancing. Winchester's Got Lunch and Dot Butler have been amazing and just so, such great community partners with this program. They are providing all of the delivery, which has been great. And they've been working with me since we started giving out the lunches as soon as we closed schools. So as of last Friday, we were servicing about 75 students per day, which was up from about 55 students the week before. And we've picked up probably another dozen or so students within the past, past week or so. So this has been a great program and I'm very appreciative of all that Winchester's Got Lunch, as well as Woodson's Food Service has done to support us in this time. I'm anticipating that we will be able to get some relief and some reimbursement for, for the free and reduced meals that we are serving. There's been some legislation that's come through and I've been working with Woodsons as well as Desi. We've been having regular calls two or three times a week with Desi School Finance to talk about what's going on with nutrition, especially for districts that have free and reduced rates that are lower than 50% for reimbursement. And we're just looking for a little bit more guidance from Desi right now because things changed from Friday to yesterday.
And Ellen, you've been tracking those, our free, the ones we're providing.
So we, so we have, I'm, Woodson's Trina, our food service director over at the high school has, tracks every meal that goes, that, that goes out. We are, we are in very good shape in terms of all the categories that we typically track for. We've been tracking since the very beginning. So we are in really good shape as far as the data. The Scott Berry, who's the district manager for Woodsons, and I've been talking almost daily as well because he's trying to manage the same situation in, in multiple districts with making sure that the data that they're collecting is correct and making sure that we are all on the same page with what he's getting from, from the federal government on the reimbursements, as well as the information that's coming from Desi. Because, you know, it's changing, you know, daily for, with some of the categories and some of the things that we're working on with finance.
With the delivery and moving, are you, have you moved to delivering meals for the whole week versus day by day? Does that change the tracking?
No, we're just doing, nope, Desi said that we could do that as long as we're just tracking student X, five lunches. You know, student Y, five lunches and five breakfasts. It's exactly, every student right now that received a delivery yesterday, received a delivery of five, the components for five breakfasts, as well as the components for five lunches.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Ellen, can I ask if there are a way for families who may not be eligible for free and reduced lunch, but because of this crisis, maybe losing jobs or actually-
Absolutely.
Would, it would be eligible, but paperwork would make it hard to do. Is there a way for them to reach out?
Yep, they can absolutely reach out to me. We, we completely understand that everybody's circumstances are changing on a, a daily basis. So please, if there's any families out there that need a little bit of help right now, reach out to me and we will absolutely work together to make sure that you have the, the lunches, the breakfasts that you need for your, for your children, as well as, you know, I can put families in touch with the amazing community organizations we have. ENCA and Winchester's Got Lunch, as well as the community, Woven Community have all been, they've been, the gift cards, the emergency boxes of food, helping people get the resources that, that they really need right now. So, you know, anybody can just email me and we'll make sure that we get everything taken care of as best we can, as quickly as we can for families.
Thank you so much.
And if people have any concerns, that's confidential as well.
Everything is confidential. The only thing, time that a, a community organization becomes aware of a family, specifically like with the, with the lunch, the breakfast and lunch program being delivered, they're, in the email, I, I let them know that, you know, I, I am releasing their information to Winchester's Got Lunch for the delivery. And then with permission, I'm happy to put people in touch with, with a community organization. Or Dot Butler has been extremely gracious and has provided me with her contact information, email and phone number for people to, to call her directly if, if they're more comfortable with that.
Great.
Good. So is there anyone else from the central office who would like to speak on any aspect of the COVID-19 response that I haven't highlighted? Nobody's lighting up. So what I would say is, next steps, we have a meeting with our collective bargaining units tomorrow to review the elements of the plan and draft an MOA. And I hope to have the plan out to students and parents Thursday or Friday in anticipation of a tentative agreement on an MOA. Most of the elements of the plan are given to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So shouldn't be necessarily an issue. We are moving ahead with more structured learning in the next month. And the specifics of what that looked like, there may be minor tweaks, but I would expect it to look pretty similar to what you have here as the distance learning plan in the, in draft form.
And Judy, except for the, you, you talked about the timeline that we had for contacting families if we weren't hearing from their students, is the expectation that as long as everyone is healthy and well and that students will be engaging on a daily basis with this plan?
Yes. And for approximately 15 hours per week, they should be engaged in structured learning opportunities. We all know that that's going to vary significantly from student to student, that particularly some high school students may be putting in significantly more time than that if they're preparing for exams. I know someone, Michelle's house, has a national Spanish exam coming up, maybe Thursday. And all of the AP tests are online, taken at home this year. And so students are, I'm sure scrambling and putting in lots of time preparing for those. So it will vary by student. But it, we're not measuring this by how many hours students are engaged, but how much they're getting out of it and do they have those connections with their teachers that they're continuing to maintain?
And really the quality of work versus quantity.
Exactly. Are we ready to move on to the financial?
Quick question. As far as the MOAs, do we as a body need to meet, when do we need to meet to review and approve those MOAs? Would it have to be prior to commencement on Monday? Could it wait till our Tuesday? Well, actually, yeah, we do have Tuesday evening meeting, so that's-
We have a Tuesday evening meeting. We could do an emergency meeting to approve. I don't anticipate that the MOAs will change significantly from the last ones. So we can go ahead with informing parents about the plan. If there's tentative agreement, Xena is your representative in terms of negotiations. There are, there are other pieces of what these agreements should contain that don't have anything to do with the distance learning, that we still are awaiting guidance from the DESE on. So I don't want to rush to have you meet and approve and then change it and meet. And so teacher evaluation is a big one that needs to be addressed. But the DESE has asked us to hold off on that for a little bit. But the DESE has asked us to hold off on that for a little bit. They're going to put some guidance out. So we don't want to rush to complete an MOA. And have you come back too many times. So we'll know more after tomorrow. And I think the primary elements of the MOA will stay fairly similar to what you've already approved.
Thank you.
Sure. Ready to talk about finances?
I think we are.
Okay, so Ellen, I'm going to let you choose which one of these documents you want to walk through and take questions about. Maybe maybe you could start with sort of an overall. Where are we at this point in the year? How does this compare to previous years at this point?
Certainly. So if we look at the operating budget. So our operating budget, we have an original appropriation at fifty four million, two hundred and thirty one dollars, excuse me, two hundred and thirty one thousand, two hundred and forty nine dollars. Of that, we've already expended thirty three million, three hundred and seventy two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. We still have an encumbrance, which is predominantly salaries and tuitions of nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty five dollars. We're nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars. I went through knowing what I know as of last week. Things, the concrete things that I know we have that we're going to be billed for and encumbered an additional seven hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty seven dollars. Leaving a balance of six hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Typically, when, so I went back and looked at last year's March budget report. And after I had done all of the encumbrances, projected encumbrances, we still had an available balance last year of over nine hundred thousand dollars. So in terms of where we are, we're pretty much where I think typically in my experiences, we would be in going through into the last quarter of of the fiscal year. There still are, you know, unknowns at this point as far as if we come back to school or if we are going to be, you know, out until, you know, September at this point, there still will be the need to make some purchases. What those purchases are is really going to depend on what happens in the next, you know, few weeks. As Chris, you know, touched on, there is, you know, the the topic of special ed. My experiences with Pam has always been that has been for the past three years that we see a uptick in special ed costs for for special ed services as we get into the spring. So those are things that, you know, I'm cognizant of. But again, I did not do a projected encumbrance. Because I just don't do a projected encumbrance for things I just don't have concrete costs assigned to. Judy, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I would if my dog would stop barking. So a couple of things. We have a variance in personnel that is attributable to a couple of things. We have some positions that we didn't fill. And one of those is the technology director. A couple are elementary classroom positions that we had budgeted for but did not fill. And some folks who left and we didn't fill the job right away. For example, we have a technician who has left and we haven't filled that position. Likewise, there's, you know, the usual amount we put aside for steps and lanes as people change degree status. Similarly, there was a small amount put aside for our two contracts that have yet to be settled, our new units. For the directors and for the therapists. And so we we put aside unallocated for a contract settlement for those folks. Those contracts have not been settled yet. So so there is a positive variance in the personnel line. Most of the expense line has been spent. And because we're in the business of of putting things in the hands of students and teachers. We bought most of our books and paper and equipment and technology. There's still a small remaining balance there. And so, you know, we are where we typically are. Ellen is watching closely, particularly those portions of the budget that are not funded by appropriations but that are funded by revolving accounts. Because we have some decisions to make. So why don't we, why don't we sort of take any questions on the regular budget status? And then we'll move into the revolving accounts, particularly around preschool tuition and transportation and food service and answer any questions you have about those. So any questions on the regular budget sort of update that Ellen?
So I have, I have one Judy and it centers around athletics. So the MIAA board met again yesterday and not surprisingly, they've pushed out their timeline. They're currently looking at a spring season start no earlier than May fourth and a season that wraps up June twenty seventh. So I I'm curious to understand and not that maybe we need to get into the weeds in the meeting itself, Ellen, but I'd like to have a better understanding of what are we, what are we expecting from families in terms of a spring sports fee? What is, what's reasonable for us to expect? I'm assuming some families had already registered and paid a fee, maybe others hadn't. So what are our expected expenses? What's our expected revenue? What's reasonable? And is there a deficit there? And maybe we have to think about it in two different scenarios, right? One is there are no spring sports because we don't come back. The other is we run a model based on what the MIAA did yesterday, what the governor said today.
Right. So before you jump in, Ellen, I spoke with Mark today. And it's our hope that we'll have a very abbreviated spring sports season. Which will require us, if we're fortunate enough to do that, to prorate both stipends and fees. And so we would come back to you with a proposal for that. The cleanest thing and the most likely thing, which is heartbreaking to me is that the spring sports season is canceled. Fees are returned and no coaches get stipends. And so most of the expenses associated with spring sports then wouldn't happen. And Ellen can talk a little bit about athletic revolving and what the impact might be of each of those two scenarios if that's helpful.
So first with with spring sports. Spring sports is one of is the end of the year and in terms of what the user fees actually do and do not cover. The cost of for spring sports that are not covered by the user fees is seventy two thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars. So if we were not to run a spring season, the remaining balance in the athletic revolving account would be higher. Because we would therefore not have, you know, the allocation that comes from the local appropriation that goes towards athletics. You know, would would have that piece remaining. If we got into an abbreviated model and we're doing, you know, the the half user fee and as well as prorating the coaching stipends, we would be probably, I would need to really take a closer look at that. But again, the revenue for the spring season tends to be a little bit on the lower side. Because of, you know, when we we get involved with the family caps and things like that.
Well, and the other good news is our costs tend to be lower as well, right? Our most expensive season is the one in the middle.
Absolutely.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
So we basically factor the revenue for spring sports at a hundred and sixty two thousand. And then our budgeted expenditures are at about two hundred and thirty four thousand.
Okay. And then Judy, just on the subject of stipends and forgive me because I can't recall it. I didn't think that this goes into a revolving account. I thought it was just a gift direct to the budget. But in terms of our McCall Middle School extracurriculars for which our staff are given stipends. What are we doing right now? I'm assuming because we don't have those after school extracurriculars that we're not paying those stipends.
Actually, could I just jump in real quick?
Hang on a second, Ellen. So the both stipends actually are in the contract, the coaching stipends and the regular stipends. So that's a bargaining issue in terms of whether we pay them or don't pay them or pay them in a prorated fashion. Most of the stipends for coaches are annual stipends and they're not season specific for activities. And so it would be my expectation that those would be fully paid. But Ellen, you can jump in.
I just wanted to jump in on the funding for the for the McCall extracurricular. We are funding that out of the local budget to take the burden of that off of the parent association. So the so before it had been a combination of the PFA as well as the John and Mary Murphy Foundation. And then last year, John and Mary Murphy Foundation significantly scaled back on what they were able to provide. So we made the, we were able to last year pay for about half of it. And this year we're paying for, we have it in the in the encumbrance line for that because we did have capable hiring.
So the so the issue, Chris, is most of the stipends are very small dollar amounts. And most of those coaches work, most of those advisors, club advisors work for, you know, well less than minimum wage when you think about it. And so to reduce those small stipends for a closure of, you know, six or eight weeks or even the rest of the year. I think would be mean spirited. And so and we, I think we'd have trouble getting people to do it again next year if they thought we were being mean spirited. So I, my recommendation to you would be to fully pay the stipends that are annual stipends for club advisors.
And so the purpose of my question, of course, isn't to be mean spirited, but just to understand what either what what we are or we're not doing and maybe both with respect to stipends for coaches and also for the extracurriculars, maybe these are things that Xena and her group might touch base with you and Ellen on and write in a revised MOA because I realize we're all sort of focused on what we think of as the core classroom responsibility, but there's all these other sort of ancillary things that are not unimportant and often drive some compensation.
No, I agree. The I didn't think they think you were mean spirited. I think they think I was mean spirited, but no, Mark Aria, the athletic director said to me today, even the spring coaches, even though they haven't met with the teams, have put in a lot of time preparing for the season to get nothing in return for that seems to be tough. So, so you know, so we'll have to look at all of that and Xena will have to take it into consideration because I think it'll have to be part of an MOA at some point. Xena, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, can I, actually, Ellen, you said something that triggered something in my head. A lot of the things we, a lot of our programming depends on grants from foundations and stuff, given the state of the stock market. I wonder if we shouldn't look into anything that we truly rely on and figure out what we're going to do if all of those grants go way down.
Right. And that's why this year, you know, when things started to shift last year with the with the funding of the McCall programming, that that's why we really looked hard at making sure that we can incorporate incorporate that and bring that back into the local budget. But I really appreciate what you just said. That's definitely something to look at because we are in such a fortunate position to receive such great funding from community organizations.
Yeah, the bigger picture of the
Absolutely.
State of our finance, depending on the state budget. I mean, we're really going to have to, I know you're on top of it, but it just kind of scares me to think about next year even.
So I'm with you on that. It is, it is a little uncertain right now what's going on. Are there any more questions about athletics before I go into transportation and preschool? Okay, so as far as transportation is concerned. The we are anticipating having a balance in the transportation revolving account in June of seventy three thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirty nine cents. The plan for the remaining funds was to use it and use those funds in FY twenty one to offset the cost of the late bus, actually to fund three quarters of the late bus that is in the proposed FY twenty one budget. At this juncture, things with transportation have been put on hold as far as payments to vendors. We have paid North Suburban all of our contractual obligations for services through Friday, I'm sorry, through Thursday, March twelfth, in terms of yellow bus. They do provide some homeless transportation for us as well under a separate contract. And they also hold the athletic contract for transportation, which there has been nothing since since then as well. I've been having weekly and conversations with Desi regarding transportation. And at this point, I have been advised by Desi that school business officials should work together to come up with a compromise with our transportation vendors to pay them a reduced rate. That way that they're not going to go out of business while we're, you know, not running the school buses every day. There is big concern across across the state that what will happen to our bus companies when schools do reopen. So Jay Sullivan, the associate commissioner, who's in charge of school finance, has been working really hard to put together working groups of all of us to work together to come up with one plan for each bus company. And then propose a MOA, an amendment to all the transportation contracts to get our vendors some relief. So when school does reopen, we'll have the ability to have the yellow buses run immediately. Any questions on that?
Does that mean our vendor is also paying their drivers during this time?
So that is a conversation that needs to, that we'll be having with each vendor in terms of what the relief, what the what the reduced rates will look like. Currently, North Suburban has laid off all their employees like they typically do in the summer. However, whatever negotiated lower rate that is determined will determine on whether they bring their employees back and are paying their employees. Or if they keep their employees laid off and then we're just paying a reduced rate for, you know, the overhead that they that they incur for bus payments or lease payments on their buses. So we are talking, you know, it's we're still looking for a little bit more guidance from from Desi. And we had a call as recent as yesterday afternoon and quite a number of emails about this today. So so it is possible, or actually it is likely that any future payments that would go out to North Suburban would be at a greatly reduced rate. And that we would see some additional savings from the from the bus contract for FY twenty. And it would be up to the decision, of course, of the school committee, but those funds could be retained in the transportation account to offset costs for next year. In terms of preschool, the preschool revolving account does is in a different situation. Colleagues of mine in other districts are starting to issue credits or refunds to families because we've been, as of last week, twenty six, twenty six school days that we would not be in session. Should the school committee agree to refund these, the tuition, it would be thirty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars. Would be refunded through two families for their April, for their half of March and April payments that were made. And that would be bring us, bring them whole through May fourth. Doing so would result in an impact to the operating budget. So when we looked at the operating budget for the anticipated encumbrances, I did put a placeholder in there for the thirty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars. Should there be a decision to refund preschool tuition?
So if I could jump in here, one of the things that makes this more complicated is that the preschool students are receiving and will receive similar level of support from the preschool teachers and the ESPs. And so they are receiving some benefit. And we are still paying the teachers and the ESPs. So that returning this tuition in full is it's certainly we, Ellen has provided for it within the budget and from personnel variance, but there is, it's not as if we've completely stopped providing preschool services. And so we'd like some guidance and we don't have to decide today, probably something to decide and discuss Tuesday night, next Tuesday night. But I'd like you to start thinking about do we prorate some portion of this because the preschool students will still be getting educated and will still be paying all the teachers?
Right. And this has been a subject that has been brought up by by several families have been emailing Sarah Casey wanting to know what what the district is planning to do in terms of tuition. And I have looked to my colleagues in other districts to see what they are doing and they are they are refunding.
That was going to be my question, what what other districts are doing? Speaking strictly of of sort of extracurricular activities that that parents are paying for. Speaking for myself, most of those are paid for and they're not being refunded. They are paid for six months of gymnastics and they still have to pay their employees. We still have to pay our employees. I just, it's interesting to know what other districts are doing and then what's the morally right thing to do all around.
Right. So at this juncture, there are districts out there that still run kindergarten programs that are tuitioned, full day programs. As well as preschool programs that are similar in model to ours. And those, there are districts that have on my list have indicated that they are issuing refunds or credits.
Are those districts also providing services, though?
They would be providing, I'm pretty sure the the same type of a model that we would be. Um, they would be providing, I'm pretty sure the, the same type of a model that we would be, that we are.
Is it, um, is it feasible or even legal to think about refunds in a, um, in multiple layers? So people who experience greater need get the refunds back, especially as people start losing jobs. Um, and it becomes a survival issue for some families, uh, versus someone whose job is still there, they're still earning the same income, they're still accepting the same level of services as our other kids are. Can we, can we kind of have that con- kind of a conversation or is that just all or nothing?
Well, what we could do is for those families that are having, um, financial difficulty, we could look to see if they would be eligible, um, for free and reduced, um, rates. And then, um, certainly make adjustments, uh, to, to accounts as appropriate if that was.
In the form of a refund?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause we already have that standard that exists, right?
Correct. Right. We have, we do have, uh, families that, you know, will pay a good chunk of the preschool tuition and then their circumstances change. Um, and then become eligible for, um, for the, for the program and do receive, you know, every refund or reduced rates, you know, for the remainder of the year.
Anything else on the financial front for Ellen or for me?
Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next thing, Michelle.
Yeah. Um, so the next thing we have on the agenda to talk about this evening is, um, the parent survey as part of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, Dr. Evans reached out to the community based on the tool district learning goals this year and created a free response parent survey around that. Karen took some time to, um, code those for us and, um, look for some trends. And, um, she's going to share some information with us about that of what she saw.
You, Michelle. Um, so for the Student Opportunity Act response, um, we had response for, we had received one hundred sixty-eight responses, which is a pretty small percentage of the community. The Student Opportunity Act requires each of our Massachusetts Public School districts to create a three-year evidence-based plan so that we can close gaps between, among different groups of students. Um, and so we align this with our district goals. Um, we had our two goals this year around, um, performance-based assessments and making a shift from more of traditional paper pencil assessments towards more of the performance-based assessment. Um, some of the trends that we noted here included, um, many parents had suggested that we really need to find a balance between traditional and, um, performance-based assess- assessments. Um, so that we acknowledge the importance of, um, like basic mastery of math facts, et cetera. Um, but then also include the higher critical, higher thinking and, um, critical thinking skills, from, and just different ways of assessing performance. There was also the impression, um, that there among parents that the rollout has been a little bit variable among teachers at the middle school and high school. Um, and also perhaps how best to, um, to work with students on IEPs, with, uh, the performance-based assessments. Um, and then for goal two, uh, which is around supporting social emotional health of students. Um, we noted that, um, in general, people were very supportive of our increased staff, staffing thus far at all levels of the schools in terms of counseling, um, nursing adjustment, uh, social emotional counselors. Um, a large number of parents also suggest, were also in support of the, uh, the PE classes, um, increased physical activity and recess. For both the ruler, for both social emotional health, um, goals, social emotional health and PBAs and the rollout of ruler. Um, parents were interested in having, in making sure that we have metrics just to understand how that rollout has been going. And I would say that overall, um, I think if we, or people, a lot of people didn't really seem aware of, um, uh, or I guess increased communication to the community on PBAs and on social emotional health and ruler would be helpful just to get parents to understand how they can incorporate, um, s- uh, some of the teachings of ruler, um, into their own households with their own kids. And we also had a section of just other comments. And one comment that came up a number of times was around teaching executive functioning skills and study skills to help students along and also to help mitigate stress.
So Dr. Evans, I know you read through those as well. Were there any other things that you wanted to add that in response to those?
So I was pleasantly surprised, um, because I think, uh, you know, the transition to performance-based assessment seems, the name of it seems a little jargony. Um, when you explain that we're trying to do more authentic uh, ways of having students show what they know and are able to do, then I think that resonates more with parents. Um, but seeing it in a, in a single content area and not as an applied application or an interdisciplinary assessment, um, is sometimes more challenging. So, you know, we're still at the beginning stages in our journey. So I was, I was pleased with the overall level of support. I was very pleased with the support for our social emotional learning focus. Um, and I was grateful for, uh, it was a narrative, um, survey, uh, for the most part. And so I was very appreciative of you and Karen, particularly Karen coding it. Um, it was one of those things where, um, it really helps to have another set of eyes to take a hard look and look for patterns. And so I appreciate that Karen very much. Um, it does reinforce that we're headed in the right direction. Um, and the two, um, goals that we're working towards, cut across a lot of needs in the district, but there are other needs, as Karen said, that, um, we're identifying and, and tackling in other ways. Um, but this focus, uh, on having two goals, I think, has been most appreciated by the teachers. Um, they're, um, setting their own goal, goals and their evaluations and their, um, collaboration. It really has allowed them, uh, to feel very connected, um, to two specific goals. And I think that will ultimately help close achievement gaps because the teachers are pulling all the oars in the same direction. Um, and really focused on those two goals. And so, um, so I think that this uh, commissioner asked me to hold off on submitting, uh, our response because the legislators are considering, an extension or perhaps a deferral. Uh, and so he said, please don't submit it. It's due tomorrow. I had it all ready to go, but, um, we're gonna wait a little bit until, um, the commissioner gives us the go-ahead before we submit the plan. The other thing that is of concern, um, is the financial piece of the plan, which talks about district resources and additional funds that came in as part of the SOA, um, and how we're going to use those. Uh, if we don't end up adding some of the positions because of financial restraints caused by a recession, uh, that has an impact on the plan. And so, um, perhaps that, you know, plays into what the commissioner and the legislature is, uh, considering. And so, uh, we will continue to do our very best to support students, whether, you know, we are able to add the staff that we had intended to. Um, we're gonna keep forging ahead with MCIA and our work on performance-based assessments. Um, our existing counselors and, um, school psychologists are doing a tremendous job, uh, on SEL. And, um, so I, I know we'll continue to move forward, but there are lots of unknowns still. Um, our world has been kind of upended with the COVID nineteen, not only sort of academically, but also financially. So, so that's where we are on SOA.
So Judy or Karen, um, forgive me if this had gone out earlier. Do, did we get, I, I didn't see it in Drive. Do we have the option to see some of the survey responses as committee members or would that be forthcoming?
Sure. I mean, if you'd like to, it's, you know, it's hard to read a hundred and seventy-five narrative surveys with, uh, and make sense of it, but Karen can certainly share, uh, her summary and we can share the full. If you wanna, if you wanna sift through all of those surveys, I'm fine with you looking at them.
Or I guess I sent you the file Judy, so then I guess we can have Frida send it out to the committee.
Sure.
Everybody can see it.
Thank you.
It's just an Excel spreadsheet.
We had just offered to help with that, um, in light of everything that was going on in the district and knowing that the committee had an interest in understanding what those surveys had shown. So, uh, we offered to go forward with the coding of that for Dr. Evans. We're more pressing. Any other questions? Okay. Um, I think then we're going to move forward to the, um, Dr. Evans' annual evaluation. Um, this is something that the school committee is required to do every year. It is, um, a part of the DESI requirement. Um, the rubric that we are given to use to evaluate the superintendent is actually developed by DESI, um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, this year, the tool that we're using is actually a pilot tool. So it looks a little bit different, um, to school committee members that have done this evaluation in the past. And, um, DESI also gave us the guidance that, um, our role is in governments, not management and that our, uh, we should primarily focus on the outcome of the superintendent's work rather than the details of implementation in this, um, evaluation process. Um, as part of this, we, um, identified some focus indicators that, um, matched our goals in curriculum, instruction, assessment, data-informed decision-making, environment, communication, commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, continuous learning and shared values. So these, um, this compilation, um, that I am gonna present to you is from all five of the school committee members. Uh, these evaluations are completed primarily in late February and early March. So, um, they reflect on what school committee members had seen of outcomes of work until that time. I was going to go forward and read, um, the evaluation. If that sounds good to everyone that worked for all the school committee members. Okay. So, um, Winchester students continue to benefit from Dr. Evans' strong leadership, investment in students and families and laser focus on student learning. The choice to focus on only two district goals this year allowed for the investment of time, resources and professional development to improve social emotional wellbeing as well as student learning and assessment through performance-based assessment practices. Dr. Evans engaged community stakeholders by surveying parents this year regarding the two district learning goals. And students and faculty were surveyed through the MCIA school quality measure. Dr. Evans has challenged administrators and staff members to rethink assessment, data-informed decision-making and grading practices to move professional practice forward, all while managing a continuing increase in student enrollment. The use of performance-based assessment was utilized district-wide this year. In addition, district professional development focused on performance assessment to engage professional staff and reflective practice and develop effective standards-based instruction and assessment that was engaging and serves the needs of diverse learners. Traditional measures of student performance continued to reflect the level of academic success of the district as well. MCAS results led to three of our schools to be recognized for your student achievement and exceeding their performance target out of just sixty-seven schools statewide. Developing a data-informed social emotional learning goal from the USFSAIR survey and the school climate survey, Dr. Evans continued to advocate for increased staffing and commitment to social emotional learning. They create safe and supportive learning environments for staff and students. Grabbing an SC council at the elementary level and the expansion of ruler at the middle school level, Dr. Evans expanded the district's ability to create positive school climates, address bullying behaviors and teach self-regulation. Dr. Evans also worked collaboratively with the leadership team to incorporate SEL into professional practice and professional development. In addition, she partnered with community groups such as the Coalition for a Safer Community to help connect families to resources for their at-home SEL needs. Under Dr. Evans' leadership, the school committee was able to plan for the predicted and increased student growth through securing funding of the Parkers Elevator Project, which will allow for greater space program flexibility. The current on-schedule and on-budget completion of Phase Two of McCall Middle School and the successful partnership of the MSBA with Lynch Elementary School. A majority of school members specifically noted Dr. Evans' strong community communication through email, Twitter, Wincam, particularly in challenging times. While not all assessed by this year's identified focus indicators, most members also noted common areas for growth based on the following focus indicators, communication and engagement. Most members noted that our district outcomes are strong, both in terms of building projects and student learning and that Dr. Evans has built a strong collaborative leadership team and union relationship in district. Some members suggest that she continues to model and encourage reflective practice in the wider community by engaging all stakeholder input to a greater degree in decision processes. They note that she continued to strive to actively seek and incorporate school committee and community input in decision-making and clearly communicate the rationale for decision-making in varied ways depending on her audience. Some members noted that the superintendent alongside the school committee should establish a clear timeline for presentations and data, data reporting on district goals and programming to improve stakeholder engagement and two-way conversations about student learning and performance moving forward. Additionally, through data-driven methods other than MCAS and the USFSAIR survey, many members acknowledged that work needs to continue to assess the impact of new initiatives such as the school start time change, SEL and performance-based assessment. Lastly, members noted that her challenge goals going forward, they're not specific to indicated, are will be to continue to remain vigilant about securing funding for the feasibility stu- study and project funding for Lynch Elementary School and district-based programming needs through community engagement regarding enrollment growth and Plan Forty-B development. Additionally, in a time of fiscal uncertainty, maintaining and developing budgets that fulfill the district vision and goals in a shared capacity with the school committee and communicating those vital needs to the town will be a challenge. All school committee members have noted Dr. Evans' strengths. Her system is advocating for student and district needs, commitment to high standards by adhering to core values and fostering empowering leadership in her staff, instructional leadership that demonstrates a commitment to improved instructional practices throughout the district that are engaging, inclusive and personalized to accommodate diverse learning needs of all students and build capacity for innovation and curriculum and assessment. Experienced investment in our district that continues to benefit the students and families of Winchester. Dr. Evans' commitment to high standards and herself and others leads us to expect her continued growth based on this evaluation and feedback. And I just want to also personally thank Dr. Evans. Um, most of us don't have to hear our performance evaluations in a public forum like that. And, um, we are pleased to share, um, our, our, our beliefs about what your outcomes have been and to look forward to working with you on continuing to grow as this outstanding superintendent. As there, are there any comments or discussion from other members?
I would just like to,
Go ahead, Xena.
I would just like to note that, um, a lot of this evaluation process started before the COVID pandemic really hit us hard. And I just want to commend Dr. Evans and her leadership team for their unbelievable flexibility and capacity to jump right in and create a whole system, put it in place that can be modeled by so many districts. Um, Dr. Evans, your leadership has not only been local but regional and I'm very grateful for all of your work. I'm grateful for the staff you've surrounded yourself with. Um, I think you have good taste. I think they're, they're, they're great in their expertise and their professionalism and it has been an honor to work with all of you. And I think it really stems from your leadership skills and, and, um, your vision for Winchester's public schools. So, uh, I just can't speak highly enough of, of the entire team and Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Xena. Really appreciate that.
Chris, I think you had something you wanted to add.
Yeah. So I have, um, I'm just a detailed observation and so a, a, a quick motion to make an amendment on, um, I'm looking at, this is the DESI, uh, tool, the End of Cycle Summit of Evaluation Report. Um, Dr. Evans did share with us back on March night that she wanted to have, um, focus indicator three C, um, which is under, forgive me, family and community engagement. That's communication. That that would apply to, um, district improvement goals one and two. So, um, that would just need to be added. It's actually on page five, Michelle, uh, on the breakdown. Um, and, and since when we're really finished, you will, um, be in a position to sign this with Judy, I would just ask you to check your pagination as well, cause this, it has grown a bit. It's way more than seven pages, but I think there's nothing to do other than to tweak that manually.
Yeah, that, that may just be the result of the, the download that you received too. So we'll go check.
So, so if, if others just aren't clear what I'm saying, so under district on page five, So if others just aren't clear what I'm saying, so under District on page 5, District Improvement Goal 1, we have a couple of different focus indicators from Group 1. And then under District Improvement Goal 2, we have 2 from 1 and 2 from Group 4. So Dr. Evans had asked that we consider 3C in both District Improvement Goal 1 and 2, which I believe we did, by the way. I think you probably got all that feedback, Michelle. Just making the comment so the document looks complete.
I actually don't know that I received it from everyone, so I will have to double-check on that, since it's not on the form.
Okay.
Any other comments or everybody else? Thank you. And Dr. Evans, I do want to let you know that, to echo Zina's response to COVID, you know, that is why we, I indicated at the beginning that this did, this evaluation did occur before that, because I imagine that other community members may have wanted to respond to that in their evaluations as well, but because their evaluations are due to me before that started, that did not, was not able to make it in. So we wanted to be really clear about that for you as well.
So I appreciate your support, and Michelle, I appreciate your careful compilation of the committee members' remarks and the time that everyone spent with me to focus not only on strengths but challenges. The most important thing that I can do as superintendent is to model the process of being open and receptive to continuous growth, recognizing what I, you know, through experience and inclination have done, I think, very successfully and where there's room for growth. And so no matter how strong any of us is, we can all get better. And unless we don't, unless we're open to taking that feedback, we cannot work to improve. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the frankness with which school committee members gave me feedback. But I would be really neglectful if I didn't shout the praises of the people who are sitting on this central office team who've worked tirelessly. I don't think any of us have had a day off for weeks and are working 18 hours a day, trying to be sure that we try to anticipate what families and students need. I'm not surprised, but I'm just so grateful. Similarly, our teachers are just so receptive and flexible and hardworking, trying to learn how to deliver instruction remotely, how to reach out to families and children, how to manage their own home responsibilities. And so this is an extraordinary time period, and people have really risen to the occasion. We'll continue to make mistakes. I think we'll have some triumphs, but we look forward to doing the very best we can for the next month or however long this closure extends. And I just want to thank everybody for their patience, their support, and their fortitude and courage, because it's going to take a lot of that, I think, in the days ahead. So school committee members especially. I've been in daily contact with most of you, some of you many times a day, and the work that you're doing for the community, uncompensated work through public service is just extraordinary, and community is very grateful to have the five of you to help lead us through this. So thank you for your continued support and encouragement.
Thank you.
Michelle, are you seeking a motion to approve the evaluation as presented tonight?
Yes.
Would you like, are you ready for a motion?
We can, I can, as long as Chris is comfortable with doing it as amended.
So I might, I might make a motion that we approve Dr. Evans' performance evaluation as presented tonight by the chair with the addition of Standard 3, Family and Community Engagement, Focus Indicator C, added to District Improvement Goals 1 and 2, as requested by the superintendent, March 9.
Second.
All in favor. And remember, we're going to be doing roll call votes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are going to pass the Wiki grant and on to the approval of minutes. We had a question about January minutes that I'd like to get to in a moment. February, can we take February 4th, 11th, and 3rd as a group? Does anyone have?
I only had one. Yeah, Michelle, I only had one ask on February, sorry, March 3rd. I'm trying to pull those up. I think it was March 3rd, wasn't it? Yeah. Discussion on Lynch feasibility study funding. Let me just find that page. There is a note on the March 3rd minutes. I was sharing with the committee that Town Management and the Capital Planning Committee, there it is. So I'm looking at the middle of page. Well, actually, I don't see a page number on here, but if you scroll to somewhere in the middle of the minutes, Lynch MSBA project timeline, paragraph 4, Mr. Nixon shared that Capital Planning Committee is asking for school committee feedback on a funding mechanism. So that was, it was actually a request from Town Management as well as Capital Planning Committee. So I would ask that we just add Town Management and Capital Planning Committee. We're both looking for our suggestion and our opinion. And then I think I also just made the observation, we don't show a time when the meeting started there on page 1. Maybe something funny is happening with pagination. I see the date is off to the left.
Yes, it has a time you arrived, but not a time it started.
Yeah.
Also, I think on a few of those minutes, Jen's position was cut off under the list of participants. I noticed it once. It was just listed as Assistant. As I think I had corrected it once, but on maybe one or two of the others, it might still just read Assistant.
Missing the word superintendent.
So Michelle, would you like me to throw out a motion that we approve the minutes as presented with the exception of a minor addition on the March 3rd minutes confirming the start time of the meeting? And just to be sure, the Assistant Superintendent's title appears in all three sets of minutes.
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Just second. My apologies. Was that motion for the minutes with your amendment included in that? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
So I said aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So and then before we move on, there was a question about the January 7th minutes. And I noticed that on some of our minutes, they're, they're getting rather lengthy, some of the wording in the discussion. And so I went back and consulted Open Meeting Law and was looking to see, trying to find a balance between how much is too much and how much we need to have. And the guidance is that they're not to be verbatim, and that they're to be concise and not have a substantive discussion recreated in the actual minutes themselves, that it's supposed to be a summary of the discussion on each subject. And, and that, so I think that in a couple, in the last of our couple meetings, I've noticed there's been a lot of going back and forth between different members of whether our minutes should be edited or shouldn't be edited, longer or shorter summary. We approved a January 7th minutes that I then, I remember, and made it much longer, and then a member went back and wanted to make it shorter. I, I would like to recommend that for our January 7th minutes, we return to them as originally published, since there is obviously some discussion between members of which version is sort of the more correct version. And that going forward, we should really only edit minutes as we did tonight if there's a clear error of a content summary or a discussion, and not to lengthen what are, what Frida is preparing for us unless it makes the discussion incorrect. So I'd like to just talk to school committee about that for a minute. Thoughts on that?
I completely agree. I think it will just, it's a slippery slope where everybody starts debating what was said, the tone that it was said. I think just keep it clean, just keep it concise. It protects us legally and ethically from looking like we are trying to manipulate information. The recordings are there for verbatim analysis by the public. I think we just stick to what Frida does. She's a professional at this. And Dr. Evans looks at them, and we look at them, and I think we just get to the point and we leave them as is, because it is, it's getting ridiculous. We're adding paragraphs, and I definitely, I was not in support of the edits to the January 7th. So I would love to go back to the original, and I'm happy to make a motion if we need it.
Any other thoughts?
So Michelle, I think first you'd need a motion to reconsider, and that would have to come from a member who voted in favor of the minutes the last time. I would, I would offer that, I mean, just so everybody's clear on this, especially those watching. So, you know, Karen did say at the table, she would, she was, I think she was the one member for whatever reason, maybe have those minutes in her packet. So she was sort of scrambling to read through them. And what I really respect is she, she did approach me afterwards. As you know, I had prepared some alternative minutes for the committee to discuss. So she threw them, and she did approach me with some questions, and I don't want to put words in Karen's mouth, but you know, certainly for me, I was reflecting on some of the things that Zina said in the meeting as well. And so I want to, I want to thank Karen, who kind of initiated a second crack at this, to come up with something that captures the, let's say, the spirit and flavor of really important conversations. What we're talking about is our debate about Morocco, right, and whether or not to file an SOI, and if not, why not? Which is terribly important to so many in this community. And so I think backing off things like direct quotes and anecdotes and so forth is a good move. And so I think what, what Karen sort of came up with is a very helpful compromise that, at the end of the day, captures the spirit of the conversation. And it, it reminds me that while Open Meeting Law may dictate its facts and its figures and its motions and its votes, and that holds, I think, for most of what we do, but perhaps not always everything we do. Sometimes the spirit of the conversation really is essential or important to be captured as well. And I feel like that was the case here, and I actually think what Karen has put forward for us to consider does a terrific job, better than what I had proposed to the committee a couple of weeks ago. So I'm open to revisiting it. I think in particular, the compromised minutes, and they're much shorter, that Karen has come up with, I think are really helpful.
Karen, any thoughts? Or Brian, go ahead, Brian.
No, I think it's important to go back and look at minutes if there are errors in the minutes. There was a specific error that Chris mentioned about minutes that we just approved, that something he said that was germane and needed to be included. I also think it's important to go back and edit minutes if there are errors of omission, if there are substantive discussions or deliberations that took place that aren't included in the minutes. But again, as you said at the beginning, we don't need to have them be a transcript of the meeting. They need to capture the the discussion in general, and if someone wants to go back and watch the entire minutes, they can catch it on Wincam. Thankfully, we're recording tonight, and most of our meetings are recorded. I guess I might feel differently if we weren't able to have the Wincam as an opportunity for people to go back, so they can look at our minutes and they can say, oh, that's interesting. Let me go back and hear the discussion. I know I've done that. I'm sure everyone on the committee has done that as well. So I am torn on this discussion, because what I consider an error of omission, not to be an error of omission, some, another committee member may feel that to fail to include that is actually an error of sorts. So I just wanted to throw that out, that I'm torn. I tend to think shorter is better, though.
I guess my feeling is when we had the March, I believe this was at the March 3rd meeting that we voted the January 7th minutes. And I, and as Michelle had, had said, I didn't have a packet at my desk. I didn't have a copy of the minutes at my desk or at my seat. And I hadn't received them in my packet and had somehow missed it in the email. So when I, following the meeting, I read through them really carefully, and I guess I have to agree. I prefer to have the, to have the minutes be more of a summary and to capture the spirit of what was discussed at the meeting, but not be a verbatim transcript of what, or, or including a lot of extra detail from what, from specific comments. So when I tried to summarize these, I just tried to pare it back down and capture the spirit of the meeting and what was said.
So if we're going to reconsider the minutes we voted on January 7th, we would need a motion to reconsider.
I'll certainly make that motion in, for the benefit of having an opportunity, since I know that Zina would like to make that motion, but I think she's limited from doing that. So I will make that motion.
I'll second.
And then I guess for discussion is, do we use the original minutes or the minutes as Karen amended?
Do we have to take a roll call on reopening the?
We can.
Is it like steps? I am just trying to see if.
We can have discussion before we.
Okay.
So the motion right now is to reconsider the minutes?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the decision point is whether to use the minutes that I had summarized or the original January 7th minutes.
Exactly.
So I won't repeat, I won't repeat what I already did a minute ago, but I would just add that I think a couple of members did make comments at that meeting in January that did not appear in the, let's say, the first draft that was in our packet, which is something I had added. That remains in Karen's edition with little change, maybe just a little bit. So again, I think Karen's version considerably shorter than what I had put forward, but still maybe captures the conversation in a more fulsome way.
I think my, my challenge is not trusting anybody's version of it other than the original, because it would demand school committee members to go back then and watch the Wincam themselves to make sure that they felt the same way that anyone who had substantially edited those minutes would. And I think I would feel the same way if somebody edited them down way shorter than they originally were as well. And I think that's the challenge. That's the challenge I'm having.
So unless this is a time-critical issue, since, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read what Karen put together, which I do think is really thoughtful, perhaps would it make sense, Michelle, to ask everybody to, to just read what Karen put together? It is a, this was a very important conversation. It wasn't the first time we had it. We followed up again in March. Perhaps the committee needs a little bit of time to study this.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody's questioning the value, and it's January minutes, and the idea is we're supposed to have them out there and published quickly. So.
I don't think anyone's debating the reconsideration, so I'm going to call a question.
Okay.
I just have one quick point to make.
Withdraw my call deck.
Sorry, Zina. I've been mulling these. So I guess I so I read the, the long version that we approved. I tried to shorten those, and then, but in, throughout that process, it didn't occur to me to go back to the original January 7th minutes. And I went back and I looked at them today. looked at them today. And my opinion is that if you have watched, if you listened to our meeting, and if you have watched the Wind Cam, or, and if, or if you watched the Wind Cam tape, then it's probably a good summary. If you did not, though, you might miss some of the nuances or, or like some of the main points of discussion. So that is, that's, I guess, it depends.
That's the nature of public meetings.
And probably.
It's the nature of our meetings, how public meetings run. And I would move that, or I would request that we have this discussion further when we do our school committee workshop, where we can talk in length on what minutes can and should look like. So I'm going to call the question again, please. Michelle, do you want to vote?
So I, I'm trying to figure out where we are with the vote.
Vote is just to reconsider. Reconsider the minutes is all it is. Not, not particular which ones.
So do I hear a motion to reconsider? We have, just call the vote. Would you like to reconsider?
Aye.
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 So that leaves us to, if anybody would like to put forward a motion of which version of the notes we're going to use as our permanent record?
I would move that we put forward the original minutes of January 7th.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh, boy.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I know that's tough and somewhat philosophical belief, but I think it will serve us well going forward. So we have a chair report. I am going to, I spoke a little bit about, at the beginning about the extraordinary work of our staff and have spoken a lot about, we've spoken a lot about what's happening in the district right now. So I think I will pass on my chair report tonight. Dr. Evans, did you have a superintendent report?
I think that we've been all COVID all the time. So I gave my report.
We just hope our families and everyone in the community is doing well. And please reach out if you need any support that you aren't getting currently. We have the pre-K enrollment and space update as our future agenda items. Also, back to that ever important discussion about Morocco. We have a vote on school choice. We have a vote on fees or discussion of fees. We have to discuss school committee reorganization. And Dr. Evans, will we also be ready for any kind of an FY21 budget update as a future agenda item to?
Yes, maybe not Tuesday, but the following meeting.
Okay. And our next meeting dates are actually, I think after some discussion with Dr. Evans, that because of the changing nature of our status right now, that tentatively, if school committee members would put every Tuesday evening in April on their calendar at 6:00 PM for a meeting, we may not need all of those meetings. We will definitely meet as scheduled on the 7th, and then definitely on the 21st presumably. And then if you would just keep the 14th and 28th at 6:00 held open, were we to need them in any emergent fashion?
Michelle, the last two dates again?
It's every Tuesday evening at 6:00. So it's 7:14, 21, 28.
Oh, okay, okay.
Michelle, could I ask a question as far as future meetings? Instead of planning an emergency meeting to potentially approve an MOA, would it be worth putting one on the calendar for either Friday afternoon this week or Monday morning of next week, since we know that we will need one for the teachers to continue? Or would you prefer that to be an emergent if we all of a sudden have an MOA and are ready to approve it?
Um, I thought I heard Dr. Evans say at the beginning of the meeting, and correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, Dr. Evans, when you talked about contracts, that you felt that we could do that at the beginning of the meeting or during the meeting on Tuesday?
Yes. So I think actually our Tuesday meeting is at 9:30 AM. I'll have to check my schedule and see if, if we have any other conflicting meetings, but we need to do an executive session to discuss strategy related to negotiation before that Tuesday meeting. I think that would probably be the best time to do the MOA.
Okay, thank you.
Before, as in before we meet publicly at the same time?
Right, before we meet publicly to vote the MOA, right.
Um, Dr. Evans, is it easier for the staff, particularly what's going on right now, if the Tuesday, the 7th meeting be a 6:00 PM meeting? Or would you, and for the rest of the school committee, do you prefer to leave it at 9:30, or should we just move them all to 6:00 PM?
Uh, I'd prefer to continue to do as many during the day. The people who are sitting here tonight, I, I know they're all on their email at 6:00 AM, the same as, you know, if we're in a normal session. And so by this time of night, we're all pretty tired. So if we could do, still do every other in the day, if we can, if we can make that work, if every, if the school committee members are available.
That actually works better for my household, given I have a healthcare provider who gets called into some COVID MASH units during the day or in the evening.
Yeah.
Um, so how about if I send out a schedule of the April meetings for everyone, and we'll approve the times and dates if we're going to go to every other, just to make it clearer, and we're not trying to sit here and rehash it tonight?
Okay.
Is that what everyone does?
That sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you. Sometimes that's one of those things that feels easier in writing to me. So I believe that's all we have on the agenda this evening. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Did somebody have something else?
Yeah, I just, with respect to future agenda items, I wanted to throw out there, while the, and, and thank you to you, Michelle, and Judy, for all your work with us, having gone through the evaluation process. Because this was a new tool we were using, updated by DESI, focus indicators, for instance, totally new to us. We tend to be talking in the summer about district goals. So not like for literally our next meeting, but it'd be helpful if, like, between now and the summer, we can find a way to talk about lessons learned through our experience, just through this first round with the new evaluation tool. Is there anything that we might want to consider in terms of our process, the timing, for instance, how we formulate district goals and superintendent goals? I think that'd be helpful for me. That's maybe more of a workshop conversation, but I wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if others feel that that might be helpful.
Actually, thank you for, for saying that, Chris, because I actually have my notes to myself here that are actually just really hard to keep track of in this format, that my recommendations following doing this evaluation and using this new tool is a couple of things I have given, I have offered us up to DESI. DESI was looking for districts who were, would be willing to give feedback to DESI on using the tool the first time. And so I believe they'll be reaching out to us as well to sort of do some of that, you know, feedback process on how this worked for us and how we see using it going forward. I would recommend, after having tried to do it, that we do have a shared discussion and vote of the evaluation tool to be used for the superintendent alongside our superintendent and district goals. And as part of that, we define a clear timeline for progress reporting on the goals at the time of goal setting as well. Those were things that were a challenge for me in writing it, and also observations that I made might have been challenges for other school committee members in writing it as well. So as you said, I think that's more of a workshop issue, and certainly something we can talk about going forward. So thank you.
I like the idea of doing a debrief and workshop forum on this evaluation and the process.
So you had a motion and a second to adjourn. So if you're ready for a roll call, I say aye.
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 Aye. Stay well and healthy, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay well, everyone.